Okay. Thank you for your patience as we get ready to start. I need a motion to reconvene open session.
Motion second.
Thank you. Angie, second best, is that correct? Okay. Okay. So, show of hands to reconvene. Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to welcome you to our monthly meeting. If you would stand with me, please, we'll take the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have some special recognitions this evening. The first one, we would like to, as a board, recognize our student representatives for this past year. We've had two, Josh and Molly. And we would like to present Molly with a medal. And we have a certificate for her. Santa Claus here. In appreciation for her service and her dedication. And we appreciate you working and helping us out. We were glad you guys were here. And as a board, we want to thank Molly. Josh couldn't be here this evening because he's singing in a choir concert. So, you know, it was kind of wild that he would schedule that tonight. But after the meeting this evening, we're going to have cake to share with everyone here in attendance as a celebration for their service. And next month, we will be welcoming two new students. Georgia is here this evening, Georgia Hollingsworth. And Michael Wright will be our other representative. So they'll be taking their places next month. So we congratulate you and look forward to working with you. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move on to the high school and some of their good news that they have to share. I think that's... Are you doing that, Mrs. Leyland?
I can.
Okay, that'd be great.
So, after Dr. Freeman's absence this month, I sent out an email asking for some good news. And it was a very busy month. And I didn't want to leave anyone out because everything was pretty spectacular. So, we have a lot of good news this month. The service learning class here at the Alternative High School has been volunteering in the Hillsborough Food Pantry two mornings per week as part of their service learning class. They worked hard each week. And the food pantry volunteers have been very thankful and appreciative of the help. Sometimes they sit back and say, do you know how long that job would have taken us? So we're very proud of their hard work. They started with one day a week and moved it up to two. And it's been a really great experience for the kids. In addition, the service learning class conducted a district-wide camp food drive to benefit the food pantry before Thanksgiving, followed by a toy drive for Christmas. And this was printed before the final totals. But I think we ended up with almost 420 toys to take to the food pantry. And they were very thankful for that. Also, one thing that was left off, they also did a project for Open Doors Pet Sanctuary where the students go shop for the pets. And then they delivered those things. So they've had a busy time, but very productive. The FCCLA, under the direction of Mrs. Erica Husky, will be providing Christmas gifts for 10 children in our school district. The FCCLA members will shop for these students, wrap the gifts, and make sure they are delivered before Christmas. Our National Honor Society meetings members, Carly Hergit, Brianna Hart, Shelby Givens, and Angelina Snyder, helped at the polling centers on November 6th as part of the youth election participation program. The girls' basketball program also participated in a community service project. The freshmen, junior varsity, and varsity teams traveled to downtown St. Louis to volunteer at the Girls on the Run 5K. They set up thousands of water cups and handed them to thousands of runners as they come through the course. And then cleaned up the area, recycling all of the cups. The race coordinators were very appreciative of our help and said it was the fastest and most efficient effort they could see at the water station. PEC, which stands for Hillsborough Ecology Club, will be working as volunteers for a community recycling event on December 27th. They will be helping to unload the recyclable items that are brought in. And the event is open to the community. Now moving on to some of our group and individual recognitions. December 1st, at Hickman High School in Columbia, two students were selected to the Missouri All-State Band after a day of grueling auditions. Miranda Lee earned second chair trumpet spot. And Logan Howard is fourth chair trombone. This is the first time in Hillsborough High School history that we have had students selected to the All-State Band. This past weekend, on December 7th and 8th, we also had several students performing with the All-District Jazz Ensemble at Jefferson College. Logan Howard, trombone one in Jazz Band one. Peter Moravec, trombone three, Jazz Band one. Elijah Tucker, trombone four, Jazz Band one. Anne Shelton, trumpet four, Jazz Band one. Josh Bartlett, guitar, Jazz Band one. Chance Schnoff, drum set one, Jazz Band one. And Reed Husky, tenor saxophone, one for Jazz Band two. Additionally, on November 6th, we had several students selected to perform with the All-District Band after a night of auditions at Bestis High School. They performed at Fox High School on November 10th. Those students are Madison Genge on the flute, Allison Dietrich, clarinet. Autumn Winslet, clarinet. Chris Hollingsworth, baritone saxophone and bass clarinet. Miranda Lee, trumpet. Michael Wildy, French horn. Logan Howard, trombone. Peter Moravec, trombone. Connor Shelton, trombone. Elijah Tucker, trombone, second alternate.
Guys have been busy. All right, we'll move on then to the junior high.
We got two items listed there. But also, there was a third item. I'm going to read first that's not listed, involving a couple of our students who won the art awards. The Hillsborough Lions Club sponsored an international peace protest. Contest, not protest. Poster contest. The theme is kindness matters. And junior high had five winners chosen from Robyn Smalls' advanced art class. Five winners were Morgan Neils took third place. Grayden Hasty took third place. Ava Schultheis took second place. Grace Sanders took first place. And the grand prize winner was Haley Brown. She was given an award by Lions Janice Boyd and Jennifer Brody. Hillsborough people know Mrs. Brody. But Haley Brown's grand prize artwork will advance to the district competition with hopes to travel to the Lions International Peace Poster Contest for an award up to $5,000. And I'm also proud to say, since this email came about two weeks ago, she has won the district competition and is moving up to, I believe, the next level, it's called the state level, to keep moving forward. So, Mrs. Brody came by to let her know that good news just a couple days ago. So, that's very positive for our art kids. The junior high would like to recognize the efforts of our student council kids and sponsors, who are Mrs. Iserman and Ms. Woody. It should be Miss Iserman, that's the daughter. She's not married. In their efforts to raise money to buy Christmas presents for Hillsborough kids. The annual penny drive collected $1,810.97 with Mrs. Koscherek students raising over $18 per student. And she had a class of probably 25, 26 kids that raised $18 per kid. It was pretty awesome. Congratulations to our seventh grade teachers who coordinated the STEM boat project again this year at Jefferson College's pool. Once again, the students and faculty enjoyed the experience. We have a video we're hoping we'll play, that Mrs. Ringo's going to play. And this was filmed and edited by some high school students, Ryan Mayberry, Zach Gebkin, and Caleb Mascar. So they put this together, and it was pretty nice. Still having fun?
Oh, yeah, it's awesome. Yeah, well, the only thing around is what door's set, just keeps running.
That was awesome.
Is that the second time?
That is the second time, yes. And it was a very big obstacle to overcome to get started. And now, I can't say exactly, but I know there are multiple other schools. I know Fox is there, and I know another school's added in.
Good, that's great.
So we may start having some school competitions. It's getting bigger and bigger. But Jefferson College has been great to work with with that. It's been a really neat event to see all the kids. And parents who probably had 12, 15 parents come up on the day to help cut the cardboard.
So how many boats did you have?
Oh goodness. Probably 40, 50 altogether.
Great job.
Some were a little more seaworthy than others. That's part of the design process.
So invest in duct tape, right?
They went, all general sold out of all their duct tape. Parents being racing up on the last minute to buy it. Every duct tape roll was sold out everywhere.
That's awesome, thank you. Video was really...
They did a really good job.
That was awesome. Okay, so lots of good things are happening here in Hillsborough. That's exciting. We do have one visitor to address the board this evening. Mr. Redenhour is going to come before the board and share some thoughts with you this evening.
I know it's kind of awkward, sorry. I wanted to share some thoughts. I wanted to take a minute to recognize an amazing friend, leader, mentor, and educator. A friend of mine, Dr. Shelton Smith, who maybe you may know as Butch, who passed on December 13th. I'll read this as fast as I can. He served the Hillsborough Three-School District as principal and our superintendent. He was a dedicated educator who had a passion for helping children and serving others. He also served as superintendent at Herkuleanum and assistant superintendent at Lumber and got a start in education as a high school English teacher in the Boot Hill. After retiring from the Missouri school system, he continued working at Missouri Baptist University as a professor and as administrator, where he had founded the Graduate Leadership Program at the university. Prior to his career in education, he served in the US Army during the Vietnam War. He was a dedicated Christian and involved in his church. He was a wonderful example for all of us. He could literally let the Bible fall open at any point with no notice and start teaching at whatever point it falls in. He would take the most complicated concepts and make them understandable and entertaining. His charismatic nature was infectious. His bubbly personality, along with his iconic turtleneck and red CMO blazer, would fill the room with life and energy. He had a unique way of motivating and inspiring others to push themselves beyond what they think they were capable of doing. I remember as a small child, he brought me up to the front of the church to help him lead singing. I'd never imagined that I would ever do such a thing at that age. Shaking in my glossy Sunday dress shoes, he started me on the path of attacking my fears and not giving any of them. Even in the face of adversity, Dr. Smith would always have a calm demeanor and assurance in his voice. His positive outlook was a gem to behold. And looking around the St. Louis area and in the state, I imagine there are but a few people that have had so much influence on school administrators as Dr. Smith. He either advised, taught, or mentored most of the administrators in this part of the state. Just in this room alone, if you would have all the administrators in the district, he taught or mentored most of the administrators that you see here today. Duncan C. Adams once said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." Dr. Smith was that person. He inspired, he taught, and he encouraged others. His impact will last for generations. I'd like to express my condolences to his wife, Linda, their daughters Heather and Erica, and their families. Education is a career that demands one's times, one's thoughts, and one's emotions. Dr. Smith really gave all he had to those of us around him. To his family, thank you for sharing your husband and your dad. Thank you.
We appreciate his service here in our district. I think it would be fitting if we just took a moment to have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. That's going to be hard for me to go on. Okay. We'll move on then to the consent agenda to approve the items that were listed. Can I have a motion then to approve the action items on this agenda? Thank you. Any discussion or items that need to be pulled? Possibly if there's a question or a concern? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor then to approve these items. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, very good. We'll move on then to reports. Our first report has to do with our insurance and wellness update. And Dr. Isakson will be discussing that with us this evening.
All right, I wanted to visit with you, just to update you on some changes with our health insurance. I visited with the insurance committee last week. And we'll be communicating with our teachers about some changes related to our insurance here in the near future. What I've handed out to you, it was in the board packet, but to put something in your hands is to give a little bit of history because it's important to kind of explain where we're at now. We've been with SEEC for two years. Prior to that, we were, we got to bid. And we were involved with JW Tarrell and with UHC. Part of the switch, we had a, we're at about $612 per month and a $500 deductible. And we were facing a 22% increase that year. We had went out to bid, and we evaluated, and we joined SEEC, which is a consortium of schools throughout Southeast, South Central and Southeast Missouri. It has 31 district members and approximately 6,700 lives. And a lot of this, this is I'm sharing, they had sent this out to us to kind of explain some of the items that we have going on. The schools working together in a consortium is they were able to make, instead of being solely focused on Hillsborough and our help, as you get kind of a large numbers, to try to average some things out. Along those times, about the time we joined, the SEEC went from being fully insured, which meant they went out to bid. And then a company, UHC or Blue Cross, would give a bid and say, this is what your rate is going to be. And then you had a choice to choose. And a few things with ACA, as well as looking to try to control costs, was to take the for-profit piece of it out. Our goal as a consortium is to break even, really, and to build up a reserve. But we don't have profit margins built into it. So we're self-funded. And what that means is basically our premiums from all the different schools go into an account. And then we have a third party, UHC, processes everything. And then, you know, somebody goes to the doctor. Basically, they run that through their discounts. They charge our accounts. And basically, that's our expense. Okay? So basically, we put all of our money in the pool, like a bank account. Anything that UHC bills us, we're paying our own bills as we go along. We also put in place a stop-loss premium, which is basically by buying out. And our gap insurance essentially is, and our stop-loss is at $400,000. So our consortium, when all of our funds go in, we pay for everything up to $400,000. All right? I'm going to the SEEC year-by-year performance. That first year, in 2015, 16, well, excuse me, that was the year before we joined, is they traditionally had ran very well in an average amount of 2, 2.5, 2, 3% increase from year in and year out. That was the first year of being self-funded. And they actually showed about $1 million to the good. The year that we joined, expenses as a consortium were 106% of revenue, which meant that the amount of money that we brought in wasn't enough for the clients. So we spent some of the reserves down. One of the things that's challenging, and I visited with the insurance committee about this. And I now sit on the finance committee of the board and kind of going in is one of the challenges to having a superintendent-run health insurance board is you have to wear two hats. You have to run the SEEC as a profitable, I want to say profitable company, but you have to set your premiums to exceed your expenses. They're your bills. And so, and the superintendents are, the role is, I want to find the best, cheapest rice for Hillsborough, right? So you can put more money into salaries. But the bills are the bills. When you're self-funded, you're able to control costs, but you have to set the appropriate premiums. That first year, 2016, '17, the premium was $493, I believe, for the $2,500. Those are substantial savings for the district. And that's where we were able to put $600 back in the salary schedule and kind of reinvested. We added some of our reserves to that. And then we're able to continue to do the step and push money back into the salary schedule. That year, and I have this on you, Hillsborough ran at 89.3% of revenue. So, we didn't spend as much as Hillsborough sent in. Last year, but it was a bad year overall for the consortium. Last year, it was a better year for the consortium. But us at Hillsborough, we've been unhealthy. And we're going to go on our second year of being very unhealthy. And we ran it 126% of revenue. And so, we're in one of the top tiers of, as far as being negative, within the whole consortium. We're the largest school in the consortium. And so, we drive a lot of the numbers. A lot of the other schools are smaller schools in outstate Missouri, which they may look like they're doing negative, and they are. But we may be talking about one employee out of 10 employees. And so, their revenue to expense is way out of whack, but proportionally, it doesn't drive it. And so, that year also, we had to address schools coming and going from the SEEC. And they had to, they put some items in place that saved schools, when you went to self-insured, there's runoff. Basically, our, anytime when we change from USC to SEEC, you start July 1. Well, when you're in a self-funded plan, let's say Hillsborough left, I'm going to use that as an example. The consortium is still going to get bills. You go to the doctor on June 30th, the bill's going to come in July. Well, they left, and they didn't mail in checks for July, right? Because they're like, we don't, and so it's called the runoff. And there was still a runoff check of like $50 bucks, even as late as the last, the last couple of months. Well, that situation created a huge issue because they hadn't put anything in the bylaws. It said, hey, if you leave, you're responsible for your people's medical expenses. And so, like, now that is. If Hillsborough left, we would have to pay, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to pay for our runoff because of our current. And so, they've been amended to prevent that. And so, we had to absorb districts who weren't paying premium. We had to absorb their expenses. Over a two-year period, we ran it about 108% of revenue. And that's in 60, when you average the last two years. Again, that would put us in a pretty, we're not a good client, you know, when you talk about the last couple of years. And it also, we're not in a marketable position if we wanted to go even attempt the open market. We could not do better. It would be bad. And currently, I don't believe, I don't have the final numbers. But district-wide, we have some very large medical cases. And so, some of the things that occurred is over those three years, USI, which is the insurance broker, had been absorbing because they want the consortium to succeed. As well as they were, you know, when you're setting the rates, in visiting with administrators, superintendents, he's like, if you are this healthy, you know, I think I would recommend this type of an increase. Essentially, you cut the margins too thin. You know, I mean, you really, you can have a 2% increase, but you have to be healthy. When in reality, we need to get to a point where, even if we're really healthy, 89%, from a district perspective, if we can get to, hey, it's a 4% increase every year. Set your premiums. Then as a board and district, we can set our salary schedules to that instead of having this, hey, we had a 0% increase. Let's get more salaries. And then next year, we had a 15% increase in insurance. Because if you look at even our historical salaries, we've had that, you know, it's a strength. So, where we are as a consortium is, SE, USI was extended a loan and was making those payments for us is there are, we have, we're about a million and a half where they're paying the bills. SC, or excuse me, UHC is billing. We're paying our bills, our cash basis is out of whack. Because we're actually negative. And so, they're, you know, paying that off and holding that back. But we have to get right with the, you know, insurance is governed by Missouri Insurance Commission. We need to really get about $3 million worth of service. And all the districts are working towards there. So, that has to be paid off by 2020. And so, that will impact our premiums this year in addition to our current health. And we don't have all those numbers yet. So that's forthcoming. Which led to discussions about a wellness initiative. Is one of the things as an organization is we start looking at our health of our teachers and our employees. And, you know, with these big cases, what we are determining, and I'm jumping to the... jumping to the wellness initiative, we have some of the statistics, Ms. Ringo, is I put this in there, this is out of our consortium, 67% of our members are not having any. 75% of the males over 50 have not had a colorectal screening in two years, you know, as far as some of the other type examinations to make sure they're healthy. One of the ones that stood out to me was people that have been diagnosed with different conditions, but then subsequently don't get their, go get their medication or do not continue their follow-up care, in some cases leading to like renal failure, et cetera. They're not getting, you know, mammograms and those type of things that are preventative. And so two things are occurring. One is the cost, but more important than that is saving lives. You know, we're, you talk about the rate of survival, et cetera. So one of the things that was discussed is how do we get people to go and address their wellness? And so what the SCEC, they voted to, as a group, all the 30 schools, is beginning next year, 2019 is going to be a wellness initiative, and basically is all of our employees will have to go and get a physical and blood work by April of this year, which is a tight fit. They, they set that date, which is tight for us. It's free, it's on the wellness, but there's a tight schedule to do that. Anyone that does not will have an additional $50 a month surcharge to their insurance next year. You know, that's where the, that's going to generate some revenue from employees that decide not to, but there, there's reasons why they're not doing it. And then you see the projected cost avoidance due to health issues being treated earlier. So how does this impact Hillsborough? Well, is, I'm going to be communicating with our teachers. I had hoped to get in front of them before Christmas break and just with our PD days, et cetera. I don't know that that's going to occur, so I'm going to put together a video and like explain it and then in very detail of, hey, how to set up the WellWorks program and then what the process is and what all the staff members have to do. That way they can also go back to the YouTube video and explain it. And then after we come back on January 4th, go into the buildings to answer questions. Ms. Genj and myself went and visited the Mercy Clinic next door and they're excited, works, they can, they will take any staff member, and the appointments are 40 minutes apiece. They said that they would even bring in extra doctors. Because for us, our concern is class time impact. They got to take a half day to, you know, and some people may have to, their doctor is in South County, et cetera. But for individuals, when you have 67% haven't been to the doctor at all, is we'd like for them to find a primary care, but at least to get in and get their blood work, et cetera. She said that even in the, if they had an appointment in the afternoon, because the blood work is a fasting blood work, that the employee could swing by, they open at 7:00 in the morning, get their blood drawn, go to work even after the appointment. And so we'll communicate that with staff and it's all paid for under the wellness. It's just going there to, to take care of it. One of the things that we're also concerned about is because of this window, everybody's off-cycle as far as their physical is going to be in the spring of the year.
Every year.
Every year. Our insurance will pay them for more than one wellness, I've been told that by Mr. Eggersing. So they could go and get one in July, so they're on a summer cycle. The concern there is, you haven't had a physical in four years, you're going to go twice in four months. However, is, I asked if we could even try to make anything between January and April work for the next two years. It's really, it's a 15-month lifetime to put us back on, into there. So I tell you that just to give you information, I think from a staff perspective, anytime, hey, you need to get a physical or you're going to have additional charge, it's going to impact morale. You're like, what? The option is not doing it that way, was the talk, was then spreading it, you know, $30 across the board. You know, the cost is the cost, is how does that going to generate that? And I think that's the challenge too. And setting an insurance rate is trying to keep it affordable for all, but also managing where the risk is. A lot of our risk is in spouses that are on the plan. You know, there's a reason.
Do they actually have physicals as well?
They will, yes. Spouses, thank you for asking.
Anybody insured?
Anyone insured except for children. Children do not. But a spouse, they would have to go and get a physical with the blood work as well. And all it is, is the staff will have to create an account on this wellness site and the form is literally just a verification, I got a physical, I got blood work. We're not sending the tests in, we're not, it's literally just that you went and had someone look at your health.
Well, this is actually pretty common. My husband just had to go have his wellness check or else he would pay a fee every month if he didn't. And what's interesting is we, as the individual, family members, we got the results. And so it was interesting to see where your cholesterol was, right? Where your blood pressure was, if you were diabetic or borderline. It was, it was exciting, enlightening for us.
Yeah.
It really was.
And it, I mean, it's good to go and do that and step on the scale once a year.
Yeah, we saw that number too.
And the thing is, continue to grow the wellness. We used to have the wellness fair and that was brought up at the insurance meeting where it was more promotional, we would give away gift cards, et cetera. And they would do the biometric screening, which was people would come in and see their results. That was interesting too. That was added to our cost as far as with JW Tarot or how, it was blended in. I mean, UHC wasn't losing money on giving away gift cards. But it also, I sat through, that was one of my first years at the central office, and they brought in a report on how healthy we were as a district. So which was, actuarially, they looked at the results too in determining our rates. You know? So we need to probably do something like that. Some local districts have been proactive and actually did something, salary increases was stipend related to this. And so.
Health and wellness committee has a point of active lightning, or do we have that anymore?
No, that went with the insurance change. Is part of the old agreement, the healthy hawks was a part of that there. So you may hear about this from employees and et cetera, that's why I wanted to give you that information. As well as playing a, a large factor in our decision-making as we go through in the spring. I mean, insurance costs, that's going to be a huge challenge. It's a challenge for every company and school is keeping out the free market insurance is very difficult to sell. Questions on that? Or is it brown?
Okay. For me, it's just common. You know? All right, we'll move on then to facilities and grounds with Director Bess.
All right. Here's like a briefing. I guess since the last time we met, that we heard earlier, everybody's been really busy the last few months, or the past month for sure. The only way we've been busy with the construction is we're going to give you a little bit of update on that as well, but construction's going a little well in the junior high. We get to get classroom size pretty well in good shape. We've got wax on all the floors in the classrooms and technology's already started today with some of the systems that have to be put in as well. So looks like we're on track with the classroom side very well and they should be ready to operate after Christmas. So USI looks good. They started laying down some of the floors on the gym side this morning, so some of the people got the smell of that smell light, unfortunately, sorry about that. But it is coming along really well and it's going very, very smoothly so far, so we're pretty proud of that. Many of the things that's going on in the primary, we should have two classrooms for sure as we come out of Christmas or two there, so we'll both actually move two teachers into the new wing. I know there's six classrooms, but here's what's going on. We're going to move two in and then we're going to both give the music teachers their classroom back. So the rest of them are going to be okay for right now. We will get those classrooms pretty quickly as January rolls around. They will get them all finished up, a little bit behind in that area just because of what's happened early in the beginning with the soils and some of that stuff like that. So, but we're, we're getting on track, but they will both start and all the teachers will be nice and shaped in that place. So that'll work out good at elementary. I think we all pretty well know where we're at on that one, kind of on the whole pattern yet, until we get everything worked out on that upper level there. So everything's good there. Some of the other many things that have been going on this past month, I want to bring up too as well, you heard some, Jennifer. But high school's been really busy, they're always busy it seems like, but anyway, it's really busy in December. They had some great concerts, if you got a chance to get to, get to see some of them on all grade levels, they got some of this theater and their own buildings. But the Saighar tournament was the biggest thing we got to see, that was really cool to watch. We love that tournament. We did come play second as school district, we're okay. They did like the fastest speed, so I'm a lot, but anyway, but we did great. It was a good tournament, good turnout and everything, a lot of the operations in that one, I think Ms. Merrell and his staff did a great job, so I think that was super for the school district. Christmas bazaar at the primary, did get to go, there was some great stuff out there, get to see it, a lot of nice talent out there seeing that they were a good productive one that they had this year, so outstanding job to them as well. Heard about the bolt, bolt thing for junior high, if you guys know about the bolts, did or did not see them. A fac system, a little bit issues there, and so I'm sharing my heard, if you haven't, I'll fill you. We did get information that verifies that we did have one unit that on the intermediate building did get a lightning strike, happened a few months back, but unfortunately, sometimes getting the technicians to prove it and everything, because they had to prove the insurance nominee, this is a lightning strike. So they are going to be looking at that. And they did agree that it was a lightning strike, we've already filed a claim on it, so we will be pursuing that. It's not completed yet, but by the time Christmas gets done and everything, at least we'll know where we're headed. We do have it running, we don't have it freezing over there, I will tell you that, but it's just not operating like it's supposed to. But one at the primary, we changed out another heater core in another system over there because that was one that was not heating in the first hallway, so the people were either freezing it up or burning it out, one to fifth. But now they're pretty well comfortable, we do have that heater core thing, so we're in good shape. Pretty well, our guys, we basically ran about 139 work orders, trying to keep over everything else throughout the week and the month, and now we'll work with technology, of course, get the classrooms ready to roll and we will have them right, that's for sure. There and that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that. Want me to bring Roy up then?
Yes.
All right. All right. And now our architects here, they're going to talk to us about some little projects and stuff going on, so I'm going to turn it over to Roy.
Thank you.
Here's that.
I appreciate it. Good evening. If you take one of those, pass it up that way. If you want to take one, pass it that way. What I'm handing out to you guys right now is a matrix that you've seen probably in the past in one form or another. And I mentioned this in my last meeting, I wanted to bring it today and kind of give you an idea of where we have, does everybody have one? I'm sure you have one.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks.
There you go. Yep.
You have another one?
I do? Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you. What I wanted to do is kind of get this in front of you guys to let you see two things. One is what has been completed and then number two is what has been, what, it's a tool for us to look into the future of what can be done with, with additional funding and stuff as we move forward. So as we look at the, at the first sheet, you know, there's quite a bit of the green blocks on there. Those are the completed items that we've done within this construction period and, and there's quite a few of those that we've actually been able to take off of this list by, by doing that. The red boxes, we've kind of put there as a suggestion of priorities as we move forward. Some of those items may be what we want to look at as our next move and trying to get some of those taken care of. A lot of it has to do with the safety and security components. There are a number of safety and security components that are ongoing and in progress as, as Ray's group goes and technology goes forward in installing cameras and upgrading security. You can keep adding stuff on an ongoing basis. So that gives you an idea of where you're at with respects to the matrix of when we first started this project and are able to look at those. If we look at the second page, it kind of completes that top one and two priority list that we had originally started with. We can still see more have been completed. Couple of them are noted there as not required, basically with the junior high annex, with the new addition to the junior high, that annex now becomes a different use than what we had originally thought it was going to be, so those, therefore those don't, aren't required to do. And then I did include the additional items that can be completed as funds become available and kind of went through, again, this is Roy, Mangans, Art Images, of what the priorities might be. These are things I think you guys probably need to spend a little bit of time on going through, making sure they meet your alignment with priorities. But I think it gives you a nice update on what's going on. And on the last page, it kind of gave you a breakdown of what the color scheme means, so it kind of helps you use this thing again as a tool moving forward as you go from there. So again, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions if you have any or a direction that you wanted me to take and help provide you with additional information in the future. I can certainly do that, whether that's tonight or in the future, Doctor, if you want to give us some information, we're certainly moving forward with that.
Question on the Hillsborough High School, I don't be safety and security, provide improved security at main entrance.
Uh huh.
Oh, that's probably a blue due to cost, as you.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, if you, if you want to look at kind of that high school as, as it is, it's its own entity that it needs probably a larger funding source to be able to take care of a number of those items. To get to that safety and security, the main entrance, could you do some sort of a buzzer system to let in? But if you're looking to take the office and move that towards the front and create what you normally would have as a in and through the office, it's going to be, take quite a bit more, yes. So I wasn't sure how that, again, laid into your priorities and that's one of the things that I think there's more conversation that needs to happen with this list for sure to kind of get it back into shape.
I have a question. I thought when we originally approved everything, we were doing the 3M security film on every entry, but it looks like, did we have to sidebar something?
What we did is we sidebarred that for the projects to happen.
Okay.
Because, and now I think we're in conversation with, with maybe putting that forward as the first thing we do after the schools are done, is at least those, the three that we've got there and ran are the schools that we're working on now, going in, getting those done.
Okay.
Director Bess, have you put that out? Have we finished the RFP on that we've talked about?
We have discussed and it will go out, but we were not taking it out until January.
Okay.
It looks like you don't like our parking lots.
I think, I think the buildings really become first and that's what we've accomplished and then the parking lots are definitely something we need to take. We need to get into, in shape, both with servicing and lighting.
So this, we're not going to review these till after we finish our project? Is that?
Well, I, I guess what I wanted to do tonight is help present the concepts, give people some time to take a look at it.
Sure.
And I think it needs a little more conversation. Then once we get to where, hey, let's, let's look at these three or four, we can start looking at what those costs would be, compare those to what's left over, and then we can start making some recommendations.
So are you thinking next month or?
We could certainly do that. I mean- I mean, if we can get some additional conversation going and, and being able to do that, we can, we can certainly come back next month and give you what we think the priorities were with some, some dollar magnitude.
A little further dollar amount by that.
Yeah, I mean, we should be able to. What, what we're wanting to do too is that by next month, we should be able to have the information on the elementary too and some of our final costs that we have for this main project that we're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to technology with the rest of the room.
All right, good evening. Uh, we completed 106 work orders between November 8th and December 3rd. Um, we're still, we're doing a lot of focus still on the construction. Uh, we have the elementary offices, all the computers moved in there. We got a smart board over junior high. And then today was another huge focus on that, as well as tomorrow. Uh, will be another big focus on that, and Thursday as well. Um, and the other thing I've got going on is a lot of training. And we've been doing some pretty cool team building activities in our office, which was a lot of fun. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from our CFO.
So as you can see on my financial report with the graphs, um, we're bottom of our, of where we should be balance wise. So we're gonna start climbing as soon as we start getting our payments from the calendar. We did receive our first payment on the 10th, so I expect another one before year end. But we're gonna, we're gonna be on the uptick now with the balances, which is very good. Um, as far as financials overall, um, we're running pretty much the same as we typically do, which is what we wanna see. Um, if you look at the expenditures, it, there's kinda like a 5% variance there as percent of budget. Um, but I'm gonna attribute that to the fact that I have a much leaner budget this year. So there's not really any extra. So it would make sense that we have spent a little bit more to date than last year to date. Um, so like I said, as far as revenue, um, we'll get most of it by February. We did get one large payment already, but there should be another one coming in right at the end of the year as we start getting that tax revenue in. Um, the audit is gonna be presented in new business. Um, Mark is here with Daniel Jones. Um, one other thing I found out about late this afternoon, um, when we did that Ravenscraft, when we redid that lease, um, that financial transaction that we did to redo the lease and take over that property. Um, we had a facility authority that was in place at the time that we bought that property or that we leased that property from Mr. Ravenscraft. Um, and that by state law, school districts couldn't enter into a lease without that other party doing it.
Right.
So, since that's no longer the law, um, and we did not need that facility's authority any longer, we did have reporting requirements or they did. Um, Gilmore and Bell, we worked with them to dissolve that corporation. So, they finally have all the certificates in hand, but it's officially dissolved. And we're gonna shut that file and put it down. Good? Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, I don't have anything to report as an official business, but I'd like to say my farewell if I can. Uh, well, as we said earlier, Josh couldn't be here, but he told me how sad he is. We, well, we were planning on wearing ugly Christmas sweaters, so this is what this is. I'd like to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to see the inside workings of our schools and all the buildings and administration. It's been a great time. I loved being able to have this opportunity to help out with my community and my school. And it's just, it's just been great. I've, I can't thank you enough. This has made me part of something bigger than myself, and I love that. Thank you.
Thank you. We were glad to have you.
Thank you.
So, good luck and best wishes as you finish your senior year. Okay, that finishes our reports then. And we'll move on to unfinished business from last month. These items are gonna be pulled from the table. The first one has to do with, um, the adoption of the high school English courses, the language arts courses. Um, we had some questions last month, and I believe, uh, Melissa Hillenbrand's going to address some of those.
Yes, my apologies, I was ill last month. So I went back and I watched the board video.
Oh, good.
And had a list of questions, so I can provide you with those answers. One of the questions was, um, the schedule for curriculum review. Typically, we do that every seven to eight years, um, or as standards dictate, as we have recently found out. But it's important to note that the addition of these two classes, we are not changing the language arts curriculum. We are simply asking for permission to use mythology and science fiction as a vehicle to teach those standards. For instance, um, understanding point of view in a complex, uh, passage, you can use British literature to do that, you can use science fiction to do that. Um, English is one of those unique areas where the vehicle, meaning mythology or science fiction, you can teach those, you know, the same standard. So it's important that we're not changing curriculum. Um, the next question was, the two electives, is this going to replace? It's not, well, we have no plans as of right now to eliminate anything. Um, there is a strong suspicion that one of them will go because it hasn't had any, or much interest over the past several years, and that is the British literature. What we're trying to do is hit, um, our student interest. And these students are students who are not going to be taking your advanced composition, your advanced curriculum writing. Those, um, courses are not going away. These are for students who would not, would not be taking the advanced classes. What effect will these have on English 1 and English 2? They won't. We're not touching English 1 and English 2. Um, and I've spoken to the counselors, um, all four of them actually, at length. To put a cap on a number to make a class make or not make is difficult because of the variables. They like to stay, if there are 12 students or less, we'll, we'll drop that course and we have to, you know, place those students somewhere else. However, sometimes it's a small class, meaning the freshman is a, a small group of students. There are too many variables to put an exact number on that. However, and I, we have talked at length, um, we are not going to push up our numbers in English 1 and English 2, I can assure you of that, in order to make mythology have, you know, 10 kids in it. Because our priority needs to be at those building lots, in English 1 and English 2. So, I can give you my word, that is not going to happen. Um, we will not be, eliminate any advanced courses. Uh, there was a question asked if our teachers move to another district. Again, we are teaching English standards. So any English teacher would be able to come in and teach those standards using the vehicle of mythology. Um, and the final question was an age requirement for college credit. There used to be an age requirement for a student to take an advanced curriculum or an advanced composition, that is no longer the case. So you can have a student who takes English 1 as an eighth grader, gets that credit, move to English 2 as a freshman. They are now able to take an advanced class their sophomore year. It used to be 16. They have, we've done away with that now, so, an agreement.
I had, um, a couple more, well, at least one more question that I didn't get to the last one. But, um, in the description, they, you said there'd be no cost to the district?
Correct.
To add these. But what kind of curriculum materials are they gonna have?
They have some of them now, and then they're pulling from, from other resources that wouldn't, would not incur a cost.
Okay, so there'd be no additional textbooks, no?
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
And truly, I mean, they've done a student survey that these are of interest. I, I can understand, personally, I can understand the science fiction, but the mythology, I'm thinking, whoa. I don't know if they've done a, done a, uh, little, little survey, but yes, they're talking to the, talking to the students.
Sure. My kids love it.
British literature is kind of, oh yeah, it's a big, I don't see.
Been watching The Crown, and I kinda got interested.
Do you know, like, the two instructors that will be teaching these two new courses, what will they be not teaching to, in order to teach the?
Well, and I think it's important to understand, the two instructors that are listed on the executive summary are just the ones that wrote the executive summary. Not necessarily, no. And I've even talked to Stephanie Brink, and, um, again, the priority is the English 1 and English 2 classes, making sure those numbers are appropriate, because we wanna fill those four blocks. But as far as, you know, saying what they won't be teaching, I, it kinda depends on schedules and numbers and.
My biggest concern was that I didn't wanna see those English 1 and 2 course numbers go up.
Right.
Okay, so are there any other questions that we need to address before we vote on this? Okay. Yeah? So, we need a motion then to, um, approve the recommendation by the English department to add the mythology and science fiction courses. Thank you, John. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of approving these courses? Okay, very good. The next item from last month had to do with the approval of the PayPam service agreement. And I think Mrs. Jackson's going to address that for us in a moment.
I think it's important that, um, you know that this isn't a contract, so it's not like we're bound to it for 12 months. You can stop it at any time. Um, we did, I think at other schools, to find out, and Fox pays theirs, Washington pays theirs. But I just thought that like Lindbergh is $3. Um, you know, and parents don't have to pay this way, it's an option. They can still send checks or however they want their students. If you look at software, I mean, that's not something we've budgeted for this year, but maybe in the future. We can do a fundraiser. Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I went back in to put, just to play with it again. And so I put $20 per kid, and it charges you $2 per kid, even if you're on one transaction. So that's what, I mean, it's, it's a lot. It's unfortunate. I don't know how, I, I don't like that it's only in New Jersey. I wish that we could get that locally taken care of. But if we can't, we can, I appreciate that you looked.
That's okay.
Yeah.
The only issue.
You know, there are grants. You know, I was searching for grants too, and we missed, I, I wish we had, um, like the Farm to School grant, I was really interested in that, but you probably knew about that. But I, I think there's gotta be a better way. Like Fox, we can't do that. We can't do what they're doing to get it, but.
It would've cost us $15,000.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, they're making us $40,000 a year on us, so, but it is what it is.
I'm glad that you did this research though, because the fee that we, our parents are paying is less than the.
They're only buying nickel, but still.
Still, you know, it is less. So that's pretty surely.
One thing I wanted to say too, I'm sorry, was that price, when you're looking on here, it's up to $20 was $2, but then when you went from $21 to 40, then you paid a higher fee.
Yeah, just.
The ones using CISTK-12, I think, were some of the ones like that. So that was kind of interesting.
That's just it was based on whatever the parents.
It's kind of, it's ridiculous. This is a, they're making so much money out of people here, and it's not, you, you know.
It's like our AT&T bill or electric bill with all the extra fees and.
Mm-hmm.
Inhouse would be great, I think, but that would be, that would be asking, I mean, we'd have to pay them something extra to do it, that's a lot of dollars.
It's funny though, if we were doing it here, like with our software and saying to parents, "Oh, it's $2 a transaction," people would be like, "No, no way, you're not gonna make that kinda money." But we, yeah, we're giving the, the money to a, a New Jersey company that's managing.
And also, um, working on your credit card, on behalf of credit cards.
Yeah.
Nothing is for us.
To me, like, when you're doing one transaction, it should be two, like, if I have four kids in there, I'd be $20 per kid in one transaction.
Right.
That should be $2, but it's not. It's $8, just so y'all know, that's what the transaction is. So if I only have $10 left on my two-week paycheck, for what a lot of parents have, to put into that kid's meal, this company takes $2 on top of that, per kid. And that's, and that's unfortunate, but, you know, we have a good system here. Kids aren't going hungry when parents don't pay, and I, that's good. I just think it, they are making a lot. Thank you for looking.
But this is just when they pay online.
Yeah, right. You can still pay however you wanna pay. This is just an upper.
This is a convenience.
Correct.
But it's only, the only way to.
And it's a credit card, parents to keep track of it when their kids are buying.
You know what I'm saying?
But it's a luxury.
When a kid comes home and says, "I don't have any money in my account, this is embarrassing." If a parent only has a credit card, that's the only way they can do it. And that $2 just goes on each payment, so it is a thing, but it's, that's all we can do. That's all we can do, yeah, just a shame. Yeah. Thank you for looking.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
It just hadn't been signed in a long time, that agreement.
Okay.
So I'm assuming they were audited, and they needed to update that before.
Well, it was a 5% transaction fee, and now it's a $1.95. So something's changed, yeah.
It was a $1.95 before, I think.
It was 5%.
Was it?
When I, I mean, when I last, 'cause I've always done check. It had been a 5%, which was like, 5%! I mean, that, that is the same, basically.
Well, we do have parents that ask if we could take a debit or, you know.
But you can't, right? That's why, that's what I'm talking about, like, that's how it gets, gets people, especially people that are living on credit, you know. I think that's all we can do. All right, so the recommendation then is to approve the PayPam service agreement. Can I make an motion? Thank you. Angie? Second, who said second? Any other thoughts or discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of accepting this service agreement? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
And I wanted to tell you that Dr. Smith, I wouldn't have this job if it weren't for him. He was the one that hired me a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move now into new business, and we'll bring Kelly back up, I guess, to talk to us. Oh, you're gonna defer then?
Mark, the one person who's gonna talk to you.
About the audit.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, will you introduce yourself?
Yes, definitely. I'm Mark James with Daniel Jones and Associates.
Thank you.
And on behalf of Daniel Jones and Associates, I'd like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to audit the overall school district during the June period 2018. I'd also like to thank Kelly and the administrative staff for all their help during the audit and for how organized the information was presented. Please auditors, are to look at the district, issue opinions, and so on. The school district has been presented in fair and in all material respects, has any material statements in their financial data, internal controls, and thorough programs. We issued opinions on pages 1, 44, and 49, and a report on compliance on page 51 of these items. So the opinion on page 1, the school district received an unmodified opinion of the financial statements. This is the highest opinion the district can receive. The opinion on page 44 discusses how the district was in compliance with state initiatives such as transportation, budgets, and attendance. The opinion on page 49 discusses how the district was in compliance with internal controls and that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. The report on compliance on page 51 is a report required by Gessie that discusses internal controls, so to be found out instances of material misstatements. I'm closing, I'd like to again thank the board for giving us the opportunity. And if you want to answer any questions, I'll add on to that.
Do you, uh, you guys, I, I, I read the, most of this, it's kinda impressive and includes some background about KSRI. Do you, you guys, I read the most of this, it's kind of impressive and includes some background about KSRS, which I know is indirectly related.
Oh, that's what, yeah.
Yeah, I know, good, good lord, a lot of, it's interesting, but do you guys, I noticed the disclaimer in the beginning, you guys don't do more than just basically the finances, how they, how they were handled, that you don't do a general performance audit or anything like that.
Not a fraud audit or anything like that.
Yeah, or anything. Does that ever get, does that ever get done, or is we have to wait for the state to just randomly pick us? I'm just curious.
Ask the state, but, you know.
Well, I know we, if we ask the state, we get billed for it. But they, they randomly, they randomly do schools sometimes.
They will randomly, they did Jefferson College two or three years ago.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when's the last time we've had anything more comprehensive?
Before, it was extremely expensive.
We can hire anybody to do that at any time.
But it, it would be about the same thing as what a state auditor would be. You know, usually somebody wanted to just concentrate on one section versus.
I just, so what's, I mean, are we perfect here? I guess, there's always something to improve, right?
Well, I mean, we do sampling and stuff, so we sample certain, so many months of credit card transactions and accrues through to see, you know, if there's anything that we see, and then obviously we audit the balances as of June 30th and test the bank records and confirm the bank reconciliations and all the debt as of June 30th, and confirm that with all the debt holders and everything too, you know, those balances, but not saying that there's nothing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, certainly, and I'm not, I'm not looking for somebody that acts or get, you know, not at all, I'm just, you know, I, I know there's always some, some room for, room for criticism or improvement, I just, so like, do you, do you look into revenue collection or anything like that?
We test the revenue, so, but Gessie does a good confirmation for the revenue. So for most of the state federal revenue, all that goes through them, and then we obtain a confirmation and confirm that to the ASBR. And then we also confirm state, the county, with the, per county revenues, and a lot of times their confirmation don't match, because their system isn't very good. So usually we have to, we have to do alternate procedures.
An in-state audit, or a county audit, are you going to test them?
But we audit the county too, so. So usually we have to do alternate procedures, trace every month, wanting to make sure everything hit the GL correctly for those. So we do, we hit revenue pretty hard, and then, you know, for payrolls, we test payroll overall with O nine four ones, to make sure that the W threes and all that stuff adds up to what the expenses are, and then we do random, so many tests of controls for just teachers and staff and everything, to make sure what their contract's getting in with the bank too. Versus then also, we test random invoices, do a sample of like thirty or forty of them. Kelly gets us beginning any check numbers, we got a system that randomly selects them, you know, we don't know where to be, and then we send them, like, okay, we need to invoice, and then we check them, clear in the bank, like, to approve, EOs and anything like that. So some didn't, I know some auditors only look at two or five or something like that, or we try to step up to thirty or forty on each payroll and the trust table, and then looking at some of the credit cards, but some of the months of credit cards are going to, you know, we usually look at four months or something, and they might be the stick. So we don't look at every single piece of paper necessarily in there, we kind of accrue through and see if they can, sticks out to us, obviously.
Like if somebody's getting Taco Bell on their P card or something?
Yeah, I mean, obviously you'll see some things where somebody's out, at a conference or wherever, where they're getting food, but, you know, sometimes you'll see sales tax and stuff, like sometimes you go, like, but you need to kind of make sure that people don't get sales tax, because it might be a vendor that's local or whatever, where, but for the most part, it seems like everybody uses, they get the sales tax on account wherever they're using the thing, you know, they're purchasing that, but, I mean, that's kind of overview. We obviously look at transportation and look at the numbers there, and we look at them compared to previous years, and then all the backup for that, student counts, to make sure that those aren't, seems like pretty much everywhere we've always had some corrections on transportation, student counts and mileage or something like sales spreadsheet, there's a little error, something like that. I think there's a couple of corrections on there.
But these errors are ever kind of, I mean, they're just fat finger errors, they're not really any kind of procedural.
They were doubled or nothing, you know, like you could tell, so I would say probably every single school district, we ought to change something on transportation, you know, I mean, not that it's major, but while we're in the new model, make sure that what we're looking at and presenting is correct.
Sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, those are the kind of things that we might see, little things in throughout that we just kind of tough imagine, hey, you know, this was off, let's get this corrected, that's not necessarily like a finding or anything like that. But that's pretty much most, and it's just kind of get little things like that.
I imagine you guys don't really drill down to the end of like fund collections for local fund, I mean, like, you know, the sports team or anything.
Yeah, unfortunately, stuff like that pulls up the materiality, because we have to do a calculation for professional guidelines for materiality, and those amounts, I know it's cash and everything, and then it falls off, because the total amount we get from that falls under that, but, you know, sometimes districts, people do come in and do, whether it be internal or external, can do things like that, but a lot of that's after school or whatever, so that's, it's hard to, you know, there's a lot of bottom risk.
I mean, like, even the lunch service, when they're collecting their, their cash during the day, you know, I guess you guys, do you have any overview of that, audit of that kind of stuff?
We don't go to.
Yeah, you're concerned at the district level, basically.
Right.
All right, answer my question, very good.
Any other thoughts? Concerns?
Can I make a motion to approve?
To approve the audit, okay, thank you. And Beth? Okay, all in favor of approving the audit? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, the next agenda item is the summer school issue. We need to seek approval to offer summer school for 2019, and the recommendation is to do so.
I made a mistake.
Okay.
I left on here, it is supposed to be chained up for administrators, that needs to be renewed, because one of our administrators moved to a twelve-month position, so we'll be bringing those names forward to you next month.
Later.
To get the program approved.
Okay, so we're just going to approve the program for summer school, and we'll do administrators later.
I live to have full summer school program for the summer of 2019.
Thank you. And for that. Any questions? It's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, all in favor of approving this program? Okay, very good. We'll move on to a slippery slope. Sorry. We need to approve the slope control project at the junior high. So the recommendation is to approve that and using the funds, the bond money for that, correct?
Change the recommendation.
We had our facility.
Okay.
Apologize.
Let's don't approve it.
Well, and here's, when, looking at, after we had our construction meeting, and we're having some issues potentially with the rock behind the junior high being thicker and some costs being higher, is when you look at the cost of this project here in addition to moving forward with the elementary project, we discussed, and maybe rather than moving forward now, let's, similar to the matrix, let's see how everything's, let's finish, let's finish, let's finish what we started.
And what Ray said was, it hasn't even moved for the last two or three years, something like that, so, you know, I mean, if we have an earthquake, it'd be a problem, but otherwise I don't think it's going to fall into the sea anytime soon.
What part of it is, again, where, where are we talking about it, do I think?
Science.
Right on, in the science lab, okay.
And the vegetation there is apparently very thick, as Mr. Cruz was asking, and so there's no erosion, real erosion problem here.
Well, who did, did the project come up here for us to look at from geotechnical engineer, from when, when did they do their assessment?
Thank you.
Okay, that's why you didn't bug out of here.
Basically, where that project sits is we've had some initial drillings and analysis on that slope area, okay? What the next step would be is to have the engineers and professionals do the analysis and create documentation to tell contractors what to build, okay, that's kind of where we're at right now. What, what's been determined is that, and we had this discussion in our previous, in our construction meeting, is right now the hill's really not going anywhere, there's no signs of erosion, the vegetation is in good shape back there. So the thought process is to kind of wait till we get through all of the projects to understand what's going on before we do this. Is it something that has to be done right away? Again, I'm an architect, not an engineer, but from what I understand, it's, it's not moving like it used to. Before, there was a gap in the wall, and I think there was some settlement issues, and that's what kind of raised everybody's notice. The past year or so, it hasn't moved that it's noticeable, so could we wait until we get all of the stuff that we need to get done and kind of let the dust settle, and then reevaluate whether that's one of the top priorities or not? That, I think, is what we were, we're discussing. So.
So nobody's going to foul it?
No, it doesn't appear that it's, again, moving or eroding away, that we need to do something right away, but it is something, though, that, you know, given the past history of it, the district needs to take seriously and maybe address at a future date, so, I mean, that's.
Like a year, two years?
Yeah, I mean, a year or two, could it, could it happen this summer, could it happen next fall? I mean, those, those are things that I think we need to talk about, again, it doesn't appear to be moving like it used to, is what we're looking for.
And they're looking at it closely, so if there's any kind of movement though.
Nobody's going to see it.
And then we'll address it then.
You know, right now, we've got junior high, and it is in the science room, back science room, hillside, now that the floor and the, the base of the floor has all been placed nice and neat, and if we start to see any gaps in there, we'll know that, hey, guys, it is time to do something, so, I'm sure Mr. Best can be monitoring that too on a regular basis, so. Okay, did that answer your questions?
I think so, I.
So the recommendation then is to just kind of wait to, to write good with that? Okay. Okay, then we'll move on. We'll go to the insurance issue. The recommendation is to purchase an additional four million dollars from umbrella liability insurance, and I think Kelly, yes, Kelly may have some things to share with us about that, if you have questions.
I pulled most of the information in your packet. I kind of went over why Music offers this additional coverage, that, you know, lawyers have gotten creative and found ways around some policies, I guess, to make claims. So they offer this additional coverage that we are able to buy. I don't know that there should be one right number, there is no one right number, it's do we want to buy extra or do we not? I basically polled several districts that I'm, you know, that I kind of talked to when I had different stuff going on, six other districts, and they were buying up anywhere between two and five million additional. So I guess it's all about what risk do we want to take on, you know, like.
And we have that base three million, right?
Yes, yes.
And the first billion is really expensive when you buy it. It's only when it, you get more millions that it gets cheaper.
Yeah, it becomes cheaper the more you buy.
In fact, the ten million is easily the most cheap per million of coverage.
Per million it is, yes. Many, well, their rates went up this year fifteen percent too, and I, my assumption is that's because they have claims. They have claims, there's, actuarially, there's a reason that their rates went up. A lot of the schools I talked to, they did reduce the amount they bought, they may have bought ten million last year, but they were buying four or five this year, and that may have been reflective of the cost increase, I'm not, I don't really know the basis for their decisions. We do have some savings, property and liability overall did not go up as much as I anticipated in my budget, so if we choose to buy some additional, it's not adding to the budget. There is that little bit of flexibility there, so. I'm just recommending four million because it seemed like that's a good place, I don't really.
Is this something that needs to be done now?
I don't.
Or, because I'm thinking.
And it will be, it will be a cyclical cost too, because if it made sense to buy it this year, why would it suddenly not make sense to buy it the next year, and so we're talking eighteen thousand for the end of time.
We have to elect by the twenty-first. We have to pick whether we want, uh, no, December, so, like, I need to go back and do it this week, yeah.
Okay.
What, if any, I mean, we don't have to buy any additional if we choose not to.
I.
How much did we?
We didn't do any last year.
Did we use any last year?
No, and that, that money is just.
I thought we were, boy, I mean.
Yeah, we had a couple of times.
I had to request to do that, I'm not really sure.
But the three million, you know, I mean, I'm thinking if it's more than three million, it might easily be twenty million instead, and then, you know, what is really good for all that money you put into it, you know, I just, I don't know. If, if the number doesn't have a really good solid backing for it, you know, in terms of, yes, seven million is optimum, because this is the level of claims that schools have been seeing, and they've been rising, or whatever. I personally would just save the money right now.
We're paying sixteen thousand five hundred ninety-four right now for the three million, right? Is that what I'm looking at, is that correct? And so for us to go to, or?
No, that's the.
No, that's the additional.
So that would be, so, right, what do we pay now for the three million?
Well, it's kind of rolled all into our property liability total.
Okay, so what, these numbers would be on top of whatever we're already paying.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and it's a lot. Personally, I think if we really feel that uncomfortable about three million, we may as well just go ten, because that's the cheapest per million, you know? I mean.
That's my seven thousand dollars.
True, but you look at eighteen thousand, for fifty percent more, from eighteen to twenty-seven, you get a hundred and fifty percent the coverage, so fifty percent increase for a hundred and fifty percent extra coverage, but personally, I wouldn't pay, I would pay zero. That's my meaning of this. But if you go the other way, I'd just go get, become, you know, get the bargain.
I'm concerned with the proxy.
Yeah.
And so that is.
I definitely think, you know, being more frugal on this would be, because eighteen thousand, that's all, that could mean a staff, that could be a supplies, or I don't know, could be any, all sorts of stuff, year after year. You know, in ten, ten years, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the school won't have, because we were randomly, I mean, just, yeah, but I mean, you know, it's never enough, if you're worried, it's never enough, right, I mean, you know.
Well, and that's, is, we had long discussions on this here, and a lot of this is somewhat even individual risk, you know, and that's where that kind of discussion we were talking about is, asked that similar question, is three million versus four million, you know, and how the Music insurance works, they're going to, they don't want to pay the three million either, so they're negotiating less than that, and so this is when we were talking about, it was like, we kind of came to the opinion of, you know, you're dealing with the school district's money.
Yes.
That it was more of, what is the Board of Education's level of risk? Because the reality is, you hope never to use it, and you're like, I spend eight thousand dollars on those type of issues.
It's about our comfort level, basically.
What is the comfort level? And so, and I called Ms. Fisher, I'm like, hey, are there issues? And she goes, ten years ago, I would have said, don't buy this. That said, now there are people with a more propensity for legal action, but.
But this is per occurrence, too, three million per occurrence.
Three million per.
Current, current.
So we would have to have some really angry people.
Well.
Our big catastrophic.
Yeah, well, and like I said, in that case, if lightning strikes us or a meteor hits, I don't know if seven million versus three is really going to make much of a difference.
Yeah, a bus accident.
Well, and that's what I.
Well, and that's what I, you know, I mean, I'm saying if we get unlucky.
And that's, it is probably the most likely scenario is similar to, and it would have to be a major bus accident. And when I was, I referenced that one that occurred in '44, that bus, the Android, you know, several, um, and I don't know how that, so, but that's the type of event that would occur. It is, it's costly, and I look at Music, you know, there are actuaries, they're looking at the odds, too. They're collecting $8,000, and they may have to pay out a million. They're not thinking that's probable, but then again, it's one of those, if you, you don't use it, you're like, oh, we wasted our money. And if you don't have it, you're like, oh, and that was kind of...
Sure, if you don't get it, something...
Well, you always have the balance to restore, anyway, huh? If you always have to. I, I just, you know, if we had a major bus accident, I could easily see it blowing up way past whatever coverage we bought.
So, you talked to Selinda, Selinda?
She recommended it.
How much did she recommend?
But, I mean, what's the reason? If there was a good...
Is that what she's seeing?
Yeah. I mean, if there was a number that said, okay, this is the level of litigation we're seeing that's hitting schools, that would be one thing, but I...
Yeah, but with that logic, then why would we have any insurance at all? I mean, like, why would we carry three million if we're gonna be, like, rolling the dice and hoping nobody, I mean...
Well, I'm not saying we're rolling the dice, but I just think three million's gonna cover whatever we need to cover.
I guess, I'm almost afraid that, you know, people that are lawsuit...
Sue that.
Well, yeah. It's, you know, we have eight million.
Well, they'll sue up to eight million, that's another...
I mean, like, I don't know. I don't want to think that way, but...
No, it's how lawyers think, I mean, you know, the ones who will sue a school.
Yeah, I think that is how they go.
So, there's, she didn't give a recommendation with them? She just said it's a good thing?
She's, you know, and a part of that's questioning, when you're asking your attorney, like, hey, dude, would this be, and she said, yeah, I mean, I would, I would recommend it just based on that, and I asked her, I mentioned, well, that's a financial decision. Because it really is, it's the, the risk, what do you...
Well, she just wanted to pinpoint a number.
Yeah, I just, well, to me, the number seems arbitrary, that's my problem.
I mean, you could look at statistics and, like, look at a bunch of schools and figure out how much they picked, it's all, it's like, that would only still be a guess. Do we have to, I think we have to decide tonight?
Kind of like the deadline is the 21st, and 21st is positive.
Just that, right, we don't have a major bus accident.
Well, but we have insurance, we have, we have...
I still have some.
Yeah, we have, well...
And it won't, I mean, we still have a reserve even if things go really terrible, although you don't want to say that.
This is just on the... Just dangerous conditions on premises. What does this, what does it...
It says it at the top, I just...
Right, it says on the... Dangerous conditions on premises, correct? Why couldn't you have your families just sign a waiver whenever they ride a bus, then?
What?
I don't know.
No one's riding the bus anymore.
He signed the first...
Yeah, that's the same.
This is on...
Somebody will be asking questions, so why does somebody have to sign a waiver?
Okay, hang on. What are you gonna say?
Signing a waiver doesn't really mean you get sued.
On top of those, of those items, it's just...
Okay.
I'm laughing at you, Angie, I'm clapping because...
I mean, you sign a waiver, then you gotta, you gotta sign a waiver when you ride a, you know, train.
Some type of waivers aren't even legally...
They don't mean, yeah, that's...
They're just sort of a...
I don't know if that was...
There's a higher bit in the addition than the older law.
Well, it does, they say it does decrease lawsuits, although people can still sit through the waiver.
Okay. So, the recommendation, then, is to accept this. Do we make the motion, or do we...
Do I have a first?
To recommend this, or then if not, then we'll move on?
Okay, because she's, she's recommending four million with the additional price of 18,000.
That's the recommendation, to...
Because we have it within our budget right now, that's what you're saying. And this would go through till what month of the year?
December.
It would be till December, okay.
Is this in dangerous conditions on premises? Does that include, like, information or insurance, or something? So, that would be included in this? No, we, we had discussed that as being, you know, one of those, that was one of the ones I brought up, uh, probably, you know...
Did you research in the same, you hope to see if the schools were actually, includes insurance? I'm just curious.
Is, I didn't do research, but thought about that, I don't know what, those schools, a lot of schools...
The claim is that we fight it anyway, and not just the worklessness.
Are still open in those districts.
Yeah.
You know, um, the different high schools in Parkland, Columbine, I mean, the schools are still very...
I wonder if federal, I mean, federal dollars, they come into play in that, this horrible, tragic, that, that would be so many millions of dollars off our systems, but I don't know, anyway.
And I think maybe, I guess, anyone can see, probably that type of issue would be, it would have to be a negligence type issue, you know, regarding that. The more than likely scenario where these come into play, bus accident, um, an athletic coach being negligent, heat stroke type issue, or something of that, athletic event, or something that, but even that, again, that's going to be, you know, maybe the annoying health issues, this is a, either a negligence issue, and even in the bus accident, you have the other driver. The district's bringing in, unless it's a, I guess, going into a ditch or whatever, something like that.
So, you said that this was in the budget, where's it in the budget?
Well, when I budgeted for property liability and workforce conflict as a whole...
Right.
That's a huge bill that we had.
Right, sure.
I base my budget on prior years and kind of the increase over five years, you know, I kind of looked at some of those different numbers, and I guess, because I don't know what our rates are going to go up, and I don't know what credits they're gonna give us. Every year they get, member districts usually get a credit of some sort based on kind of how much they, their reserves are going to. So, we got a good credit this year, and our rates didn't go up as much as expected. So, you know, we saved some money.
But if we don't spend it, then we're...
From what I budgeted, right, we don't spend it, and we still saved it.
And like you said, this year?
Right.
We don't always get those.
We usually, I just get a credit typically, but we just don't know what a threshold it will be at. I'm just concerned with the proxy.
Okay, so we still have that hanging out there. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of an additional $4 million? So, if there's no motion, then we'll move on. Okay. We would like to have a discussion, Dr. Isaacson would like to set up a strategic planning workshop, and we need to kind of get our calendars together, and he's gonna talk to us about what he would like to, to focus on at that workshop, and then we'll look at a time as well. So, go ahead.
All right, yes, I'd like to have everyone, like, have a work session to discuss, uh, just strategic planning for the future, starting with some personnel, we're just finishing up the retirement incentive, and then also talking about, you know, what to do with some of the positions that are open, talk about district-wide, as far as even my current position, you know, current position, how to best achieve what's best for the district, both in the short term with Prop C, but also in the long term. And then it's trying out some different things to try to address our needs now, in the future, and then put things in place so that we can start developing the strategic plan. A lot of it's starting with people in positions and evaluating some of our current practices, and just setting some of the course in action as far as discussing 19, the 19, 20 school year, but also in the future, and kind of our rationale and our thoughts and what's thinking, Ms. Hildebrand will be there, Ms. Genge, Mr. Whitehead, at that work session as well, to kind of visit and give our thoughts and direction, but also gather your input. We're going to meet on the 10th with the building administrators to get that input, kind of, yeah, this is what we're thinking, here's our rationale as to why, what are your thoughts? What are you, kind of, bringing all that together? So, meeting, kind of, the week of the 14th through the 18th was our initial hope, because that gives us some time to lay out some final thoughts and looking at costs and savings with Prop C, and just talking about insurance and all these different things that we are facing us that, anytime we have open positions that don't directly impact student structure, we gotta evaluate and look and see how can we accomplish what we need to accomplish. Maybe there's a better way, maybe there's not, but having those discussions collectively, so that we have a direction. And so, I'm wanting to visit with you about that.
So, if you're meeting on the 10th with admin, then you want to wait till after that?
Yes, thinking the week of the 14th.
A special board meeting, then?
Just a workshop?
It's just a workshop.
A workshop?
Are we, we're supposed to be here?
Yes.
Are we gonna be discussing, I mean, policy?
It's an open meeting, no, it's a workshop, open meeting, anyone? Okay.
Okay. Because, I mean, we can't have more than three, I mean, that's why we have these committee meetings, right? We can't have more than three people discussing policy as a board without a meeting and agenda.
No, this will be, it's supposed to...
Oh, so it'll be, okay, it'll be like a special...
Special one, yeah.
But it is a special board meeting.
There won't be any motions and action taken until...
Just people are discussing.
It's just more discussion and planning.
Sure, but I mean, there will still be an agenda.
Yes, yes.
And those didn't have, you know, invited. So, your suggestion was the week of the 14th, because our board meeting is on the 24th, so I have no idea what night works best for people anymore.
No, what?
I, not that one.
I'm trying one of 15 to the other. How about the 14th?
So, 14th then, on the Monday?
Seven Mondays.
Mondays?
The 14th?
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
What time?
What time would you like to, how, I know you come from the city, Jane, so...
Yeah, but that, Mondays are always different for me.
Okay, so it doesn't matter?
Nope, doesn't matter.
So, you want to do it fairly early, you want to start at 5:30, 6:00, or...
Five to 5:30?
Five, anyway, after four, five.
Okay.
4:30? I can, five would be the very earliest, so...
Okay. What's wrong?
Same time?
So, you can't do five?
Should we vote?
Well, but you could, you could come in late, maybe.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so we'll do 5 o'clock then, maybe that way we'll make it an early evening.
Can we say how long this is gonna go? Do we have a, give it a end time?
Seven.
Okay.
So, five to seven, and...
Well, unless we keep up... Well, no, five to seven, because that's beyond that, and you, that'll keep us focused and lay out.
And, Nathaniel, send us a reminder, please, because sometimes we get crazy, we get busy. Okay, which, that also brings us to the next item. Part of our MSBA contract that we signed with them when we were doing our superintendent search, they were going to, or they offer us another training session that we can utilize for a variety of things. But it's something we can do with Dr. Isaacson this time, it can be board superintendent relations, we can work on, talk about evaluation, communication, we can, you know, a variety of topics, but we've already paid for this service, so it would be nice to set it up and have this, this training. My thought is that it, it would be great to, to focus on evaluation since we're still working on that, and that would be, January is usually the month that we work on evaluation with the superintendent. We already have a special workshop for January, so maybe we need to move that to February, and that way we're not, you know, doubling up so much, okay? So, we need a date and a topic so that we can get back with MSBA. We tried to ask what days they had available, and they wanted to know what we wanted to do, so let's come up with a date, and then we'll throw it back at them and say, this is when we want to meet, and this is the topic we want to discuss or work on, and let them jump through the hoot, maybe, so to speak. Okay? What are your thoughts?
But if Monday works best.
For Jan, for February, you're arguing?
It doesn't matter, I mean, I can gain her whenever it works best for everybody.
Well, the 18th is Presidents' Day.
I'm just saying, the 11th is Legislative Day. I travel the fourth and the fifth. Okay, well, that takes that one out.
14th is good for me.
Valentine's Day.
It's Valentine's Day. Kelly may not like that.
I love to take y'all, I got a meeting.
You know what, we just recorded that. Like Kelly, no.
Say goodbye.
Do I need to call her? So, um, these meetings take about two, two and a half hours, these workshops, so, what day, I don't think I have, are we doing the 28th is our board meeting that month? Yes. So, we could do, I don't know, the 18th is Presidents' Day, I don't know if that would be, did you say you had, you were going, Angie, that?
Fourth, by the fourth and the fifth.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, I'm not doing anything special on that day.
The 18th, that's Presidents' Day.
Do you do something special on Presidents?
Oh, are we, uh, so, maybe?
It's a holiday.
I mean, I have kids, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. So, everybody good? So, we'll, we'll have to confirm with MSBA, though, right? So, we'll have to, if you wanna, well, I don't know, tentatively schedule that, and we'll find out from MSBA if that date works for them. Will shoot for Mondays. I guess the topic, then, we need to decide.
What are our choices on the topic, again?
Can be on board superintendent relations, we can talk about the evaluation process and develop our process, and that way he's in on it, and they can work through it with us. Communication can be one, learning how to...
But thank you for talking about the evaluation, I like that for a while.
Well, we've been developing our evaluation process, but it needs to be fine-tuned by all means, needs help. Make it harder, so she says.
No.
But, oops.
Would we be talking about the evaluation of the superintendent, or evaluation across the board?
Just superintendent. It's not, that's, because that's the only evaluation we do as a board. I know you've got a way, others, yet. No. Is that topic, that's suitable? Everybody okay with that? Okay, so, we'll work on the superintendent evaluation process, and we're looking at February 18th.
Did you want to offer an alternative date as well, 25th?
We can. Do we want to do the 25th if we have a board meeting on that Thursday, meet twice that week?
I'm in town that week, so...
Okay.
What's wrong with Tuesdays?
I'm fine with Tuesdays.
I don't have an issue with Tuesday.
Tuesday's are good.
So, we could offer the 18th or the 19th, then?
12th, 13th, I'm not gonna have to worry about the power of any question.
Okay.
The 12th works.
Or the 12th, anybody have an issue with that? So, that way we give them three dates, and then they can...
12th, 18th, or 19th. Twelfth, eighteen, or nineteen.
And what time would you like to start? They're about two, two and a half hours. Five?
Well, but that depends on, is the doctor under, is supposed to be here with us?
No, no.
Okay.
It, it depends on the topic, I think.
Oh, okay. But it sounds like if MSBA would be here...
I think Mike Parnell is the, the gentleman that would be coming for that topic.
Irish?
Okay, everybody okay? Jane, Tuesday at five would work for you?
And that is, again, what day, February twelfth, if that other one's...
Twelve, eighteen, or nineteen, those are our three dates.
Okay, I'm not gonna put these in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna, till we know.
But we'll begin at five o'clock.
Gonna try. I'm gonna shoot for that and then see what they say. But when they wanted to know what we thought was best, I'm like, well, I don't know, I can't answer that without talking to you all, so... Okay. That's what we needed to know then, very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to, um, construction change orders. And those were things that were sent out in the forty-eight hour notices. We should've had emails on those, correct? Okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve the change orders for batch number seven as presented.
Seven.
Okay.
Six.
And Jane, she said it at the same time, so we'll put her in there. Any questions or discussion that we need to have on those change orders? Okay, all in favor of approving the change orders for number seven? Thank you. The next item is, um, sorry, an agreement for sped-related services for the PT. So we, um, the agreement is with Lorax rehabilitation and healthcare services for the, the PT for the remainder of this school year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion? That was also part of your forty-eight hour.
So...
Thank you, Beth, and John? Rob, sorry. Well, it's coming from that general...
It's the beard.
That was it. It was a male voice, sorry. Okay, so the motion is to approve the agreement with Lorax rehabilitation. Any other questions or thoughts that you need to discuss? All right, all in favor of approving that agreement? All right, very good. And the last item has to do with, um, approving early graduation at semester for the application that we were given. Do I have a motion?
I assume.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Jane?
Why it was late?
I'm not sure if you thought you'd just make it.
Oh.
So who's just like, well, just...
Okay.
We actually should've.
Right.
Should've anyway.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, so the motion is to approve the application for early graduation. All in favor? All right, very good. Okay.
A journey.
Seven?
I couldn't even get it out of my mouth. Okay, did you get all that?
We said.
Okay.
Thinkers are old.
All in favor of a journey? Very good. Thank you for attending and we'd like to invite you to share some cake and wish Molly the very best as she finishes her high school senior year.
Where she moves on to bigger and greater things.
Yes.